Start, I can help you with that. Otherwise, once we start, I'm going to turn my camera and mic off and I'll just be listening.
That's great. No, I think everything's fine. Let me. Share my screen too. I'll pull up the document.
Hi, Matt Headless.
Good evening. I'm gonna try to pull up the document right now and get that on the screen properly.
How are we doing? Are we feeling okay?
Yeah.
Right. I'm sorry if it's a little loud. My daughter's got all kinds of stuff going on, but it's like.
I know, I hear that.
I appreciate, I appreciate, and I just want to make sure we test everything out before.
Yeah.
They're recording now, so they've got that under control.
Yeah. I'll get to the document and put that up. All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Do this over. That's the PDF. Kevin on, you know, there's one thing functionally to ask about, so I'm gonna and I did this right just a couple of days ago, but I forgot what button, you know, so the slideshow and then I could play in just one in one screen, if that makes sense, or maybe I'll just use the PDF.
Either will work as long as it's, as long as it's clear and visible to the public, it's, it's fine.
Okay. I got the dual monitors, so when I put it up, sometimes it takes up both monitors and it gets a little bit wonky there.
It looks good on, on my end.
Good. Yeah. Hey, Michael, how you doing?
Hey, all right, how are you?
Doing pretty good.
Oh, good. Yeah, we got a planning board meeting, special planning board meeting tonight, too. I'm missing everything here, so I had to stay on this one. I couldn't believe it. All the meetings happened at once. I guess you realize that all the time in your game.
Yeah. Yeah, and for that reason, Sumac and Andy couldn't make it, but for a city representative, we do have Mr. Matthew Stone on.
We had the other meeting, yeah. All righty, yeah, cuz it anyway, sure. Yeah, cuz this was supposed to be at two o'clock in the afternoon, right?
Now, this one was always scheduled at six to eight.
It was. Well, I got the two o'clock.
Emails and so many meetings.
Right.
And I'll give registrants another minute to get on. I know some people have IT issues once in a while. But those, for those of you that are on, this is a recorded public hearing and you'll potentially see that red dot up in the top left-hand side of your screen there and it's just indicating that's recording.
You put the planning board meeting?
It's on. They're just milling about.
You back of what's it to happen?
So Megan also accepted too. Do you know if she's gonna dial in?
Yeah, she's going to come on, but she may be a little late, so you don't need to wait for her.
Well, it's, you know, 6:03, I'll kick this public hearing off. My name's Matt Lyden. I'm the VP of Compliance for Tiger Janko, helping to oversee the Bayonne Energy Facility. And then, you know, this is a public hearing regarding the Environmental Justice Administrative Order 2021-25 for air pollution control permit modification that we're having there at the facility. I'm using this PDF presentation, so I'm gonna give me some leniency with the moving around on it now. See if the page down works. Again, welcome to the public hearing. You know, we have many of these stakeholders involved in this process from public individuals and representing various organizations throughout that region of Bayonne and Jersey City, Hudson County in general. We have a handful of facility representatives on the line too and consultants. Lisa Monica is on. She's our air permitting consultant that helped us out with the application and has been working for us with the facility on various aspects. Hey, Lisa, since the, since the beginning of construction, various local and state representatives. Again, Mr. Matt Sloan with NWNE, who's a city consultant. And then we have a few representatives from the Jersey DP also on the line too. Here's Megan. Let me accept this. Brief overview of the agenda tonight. We're gonna go over the facility, quick overview of the facility, and then the permitting project that we'll be going through. And then also the administrative order 25s. Just overview of the requirements of that, how we're meeting them up to date and what we'll be doing in the next handful of months to comply with the AO25 requirements. And then open it up to you, public, for verbal comments. I do remind you to, I think the best way to put in a comment here, this forum, but also please email the comment directly to the info@tigerjanko.com. That's the best way to codify these things, so we, we don't mess up on anything. Another Kevin's joining on too. Okay. So, brief overview of the Bayonne Energy Center. Right now, it's the state-of-the-art natural gas-fired simple-cycle combustion turbine facility. And you'll see on the map, it's located sort of way at the edge of the Constable Hook area in Bayonne amongst, you know, the majority of this IMTT tankyard and some Buckeye Tankyard, very heavily industrial area of Bayonne. The facilities again is state-of-the-art combustion turbines. We have emission controls on each of the 10 units using water injection, SCR, and CO catalyst to minimize emissions to the lowest available emission rates for these type of technologies. The history of the facility, it was commissioned back in 2012 with the first eight units. Each unit's about 64 megawatts apiece. And then later on in 2018, we commissioned two more units at about 66 megawatts each. They're all similar vintage Rolls-Royce slash Siemens simple-cycle combustion turbines. Nominally, all 10 units is about 644 megawatts there. And we do have capability to burn backup fuel oil during natural gas curtailments or any type of system emergencies. Again, going into the sort of zoning and location of the facility. Here's Bayonne Energy Center. This is heavily industrial district zoning with some waterfront recreation. You know, here's that golf course right here. There's some, another guest. Let me go get this right here. Good afternoon, Melissa, are you on?
Hello, yes.
Hey, great. We just started about two minutes ago, but you're only on slide four.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so, just to get a little bit more information about where it's located in the sort of city boundaries in this heavily heavy industry district zoning. We're a little over a mile from the closest residential population. I think it's, if you do the Google map, it's about 1.1 miles from the nearest residential area there. So it's distant from the residents and zoned in the proper area. Next, a little bit of overview about the Energy Center itself, a little bit touting, we are, I believe, the best-in-class in safety, top-tier in environmental, social, and governance issues. In fact, with the International GRES report, it placed number one in its peer group category last year. The year prior to that is number two, and we look to keep on to that number-one, number-two slot for the next handful of years of operating. We're jockeying with a sister facility of ours and we keep on going back and forth. A bunch of good people doing a good job with the ESG on that. Also, local awards, you know, to say Valley Search Commission, Award of Excellence with our operations there. Ethos, which is the operator, we're achieving safety and environmental excellence awards. Just the plant manager and the team there do an excellent job keeping the place clean, creating a safe working environment for the employees and contractors and visitors like around the area. We have a strong working relationship with the City of Bayonne Fire Department Emergency Response, received a fire safety appreciation award. And again, we have valued relationships with the local, state, and federal agencies as well as NGOs throughout the region. Next slide, a little bit more about the facility's attributes. We have 16 onsite employees there that are operating the facility. And various contractors that come on and on as-needed basis, and then also during outages and major maintenance activities. On an annual average, we hire about 10,000 hours a year of contractors. So that's a significant, you know, jobs star for the facility there. And for the local economy, just the monies that were using to operate government expenses and environmental programs, it's a significant amount. About $11 million there for labor, maintenance, materials, and services on an annual basis for the facility. The government fees and taxes and related expenses is about $5 million a year to local, regional, state areas, governments, and environmental programs, which is always surprising. You know, we cost about $8 million in allowances and various permit fees. Of that $8 million, a significant amount of it goes to the Regi Strategic Fund and just, you know, what that fund is doing right now so far on annual basis, I think, or last two years, it awarded about $91 million just specifically there in New Jersey to clean air. Mike, did you have a question?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I gotta mute myself here.
Yeah, and just the, you know, the New Jersey Regi Strategic Fund, $91 million funded so far in various clean initiative programs. The facility, electric reliability regarding the facility has an excellent record of about 99% start reliability, which is, again, a top-tier in its class. It is a 10-minute fast-start facility, and this complements the renewables that will be being brought on when the wind dies down or the clouds roll over the solar farm. This facility complements those renewable assets by providing the immediate power when some of these natural forces are not available to generate the power via the wind farm or the solar farm. It also provides a very critical role in the black start system restoration of the grid itself. It's the first to be called on by ConEd for power into the city. Also, touting the facility as a good neighbor there within the Bayonne and specific regions. We have various donation and community service programs dealing with the Shop With A Cop program there in Bayonne, the Guardian Foundation. With Police Athletically, we have donated for a bus donation there. About an annual basis, we bring on an internship program, and that person's either doing some field services there, working with the guys, doing some electrical engineering, engineering itself, and just learning about power plant basics. It's a great opportunity for a young student there. We also do fire department emergency response training. Once or twice a year, we hold drills with the department. They can come on site, perform their drill activities, get their training in a real-life industrial environment. And that's a picture of our guys helping out the fire department do a confined space drill to meet their requirements there. I'm gonna grab a little bit of water. And as I mentioned, Bayonne helping out the renewables in this energy transition environment that we have going through for the next 20, 30, 40 years. So the facility right now, our future ambitions is this construction of a battery project. Approximately 50-megawatt capacity with 200-megawatt hours. We're slated to have that commercially operable in 2025 timeframe, but just to give you a picture of what that's gonna look like, this is, this is the energy transition right here, and Bayonne Energy Center is gonna be a vibrant part of that. In addition to the battery complex, we're also exploring some clean fuel technologies, and you could Google these press releases from Novo Hydrogen, our partnership with them, to look at exploring opportunities to combust clean hydrogen fuel. Also, various renewable and biofuels of natural gas and fuel oil too as well. And again, this is, all this is part of the energy transition that we're going through in the next couple of decades to complement the onboarding of these intermittency and renewables. And so why we're here today are these environmental justice actions, and just a brief history of them, and I'm sure the majority of the audience is familiar with the chronological aspect of these things. You know, first, back in 2018, we had this executive action by the governor. And then, two years later, legislative action, the environmental justice law was codified there. Taking the guidance from the legislative action, we have an administrative order that we're currently complying with, that's the policy in effect right now. Proposed regulatory action was published back in 2022, and we anticipate a final rule that promulgates these environmental justice regulations in probably the next month or so, April, May timeframe. We're expecting that rule to come out. Environmental justice terms, and again, most of you are probably familiar with this, the permissive to be applicable to these environmental justice, the policy, the administrative order, then also the rules. You have to be a defined facility, and Bayonne's a defined facility. We're a major source of air pollution. We're a Title V facility with the air control permit. Other facilities that are applicable to the role, mostly hazardous waste, solid waste, sort of scrap metal facilities and such like that. And then, the facility has to be an overburdened community, and that's as defined in various census block groups. Either equal to or greater than 35% low-income households, equal to or greater than 40% minority or tribal community, and the same equal to or greater than 40% English proficiency that defines an overburdened community within that block group. And then, the actions that are applicable to this process right now is any significant air permit modification or renewal process, and then other various waste and water purging actions, and we're focused right here on this significant air permit modification. Just another view of the facility of where it's located within the census block map. So here's Bayonne Energy Center in block 1001 and track 108 in Hudson County is numerically 017 in Jersey, which is 34. And currently, as New Jersey DP defines applicability and also shows it on their EJ map, and I'm sure the audience is well aware of this too. So here's Bayonne Energy Center, the blue dot here, and this is the block group that we're in. And the block group were triggered overburdened community for the minority, and I think it says it right here, 65% minority, that is greater than the trigger 40%. So what are these administrative order 25 requirements on high level? To publish some notices and materials, and here's our view on that. We published a public notice regarding this permit modification in the Jersey Journal, the Bayonne Community News. The materials are there on the public library. Also, as you've seen, the New Jersey DP circulated information regarding this process in their email. It's posted on the Jersey website, and we communicated with the City of Bayonne. I reached out to a handful of you already just to get some input and some advice on how to carry on this, and then also who else to contact, and I made a number of other contacts throughout this process. Again, for communication channels, you have the info@tigerjanko.com email, and then also provided the address of the facility with any handwritten comments on that as well. Other AO25 requirements is holding a public hearing, and that's what we're doing right now, just to formally receive any verbal comments and to get input from the local citizens and groups of the area. Comments again, receive email, mail, and also verbally this form. The deadline for those comments is March 24, 2023. So just about a month and two days away from now. We're gonna take your comments. Work with New Jersey DP on responding to them, and they're gonna be posting them on the website. So once your comments come to us, I'm figuring a couple of weeks, a month or so, that we could respond to them and have them up on the website there. We're expecting permit issuance in this June-July timeframe. The New Jersey DP is gonna consider your comments or responses and incorporate, you know, required actions within that permit to avoid or minimize environmental or public health stressors upon the OBC, and that's part of the the law and the administrative order itself. In addition to this public comment hearing that we're having right now. With the existing permitting requirements, we're gonna have another public comment period. Possibly not a public hearing, because it's not called for unless people call for it, but there will be another comment period in the May-June-July timeframe regarding this permit action according to the Title V permitting requirements of the state already. Just to let you know, that's gonna happen as well. So you'll see another public notice in the papers around that timeframe. This project, in essence, it's a pretty minor project. Our units, one through eight, we're going to be performing some controls, logic upgrades, to make them comparable to units nine and 10. And if you remembered in the beginning, I said units one through eight are nominally at 64-megawatt units, and nine and 10 are 66. So through some controls, logic programming, we could allow the generator to operate a 66-megawatt generator instead of a 64-megawatt generator. And not to minimize this process, but, you know, there's a control permissive in the programming, you know, just to use sort of common language like that, that says, limit the generator to 64 megawatts. Well, we're gonna say 66 megawatts instead of 64, and that's sort of the extent of the, the actual process there. It does have a nominal increase of about 6% electric profile. Two things with this, we are requesting increase in pound-per-hour limits on some of those constituents. However, we're not requesting a total annual emission increase. We're gonna keep all the normal annual emissions the same there, but it's just a slight, about 6% increase in some of the emission limits on the facility. Anybody have any questions on the project itself? Okay.
I'm sorry, could you go back a slide, Matthew? So I see, no, this one here, you're proposing to, you're proposing a decrease in pounds per hour on SO2.
Correct.
And a few, and a few other categories. Why, why is that?
Great question, yeah, and it's in the permitting engineering of it. So what we're using is lower grains of sulfur in the natural gas as a limit. So in prior permitting, I think, and Lisa, correct me, we might have used one grain of sulfur in the natural gas per hundred standard cubic feet, but here in this permitting exercise, and as the natural gas is, we're using .42 or .5 thereabouts.
Yes, it's .4.
Point four.
Yes, you know, when, when the facility was originally permitted back in 2008, the typical natural gas sulfur content that was guaranteed by the gas companies was, was .8 grains per hundred standard cubic feet. But since that time, the pipeline quality, natural gas. But since that time, the pipeline quality, natural gas. I'm not sure if it's become cleaner, but the, the natural gas vendors are willing to guarantee the lower sulfur content on your fuel tower. And that's how we demonstrate that we're complying with our limits. So we are taking a lower SO2 limit to reflect the tower that we get from the natural gas company.
That, and the same thing with the particulate matter. They're guaranteeing that there's no change in that too as well. So you'll see some varying numbers on that.
The particulate is the same, so the pounds per cubic foot of natural gas actually has gone down.
And again.
So where you, where we see, like with particulate matter staying the same, it's because you're seeing less, less sulfur and other, you know, other toxins in the gas itself? Is that why some of these numbers are remaining the same and others are going down?
Yeah, regarding the P M is because from Siemens, we got the, the engineering numbers that it's not changing. The limit doesn't need to change. So when we do the stack testing, it'll still be extremely lower than that.
Are you going to talk about the stack testing in your slides?
It's not in the slides, but you know, I could answer those questions. We're doing our five year testing, actually beginning, if not next week, the week after that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering how often, you know, are, so you, you mentioned you're doing stack testing. So you're not just modeling, you're actually testing at the stacks. How, how often are you doing that?
Correct. For the P M, it's every five years, we're required to do that.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. The project impacts, and Lisa, you could give a quick overview of how we're looking with the modeling? You're on mute.
As you mentioned, Melissa, we demonstrate compliance with our air permit requirements in state and federal regulations using a number of methods. One is stack testing. And stack testing is done once you're done commissioning and you start up. And that was done back in 2012. And then the permit requires stack testing every five years. So we stack test every five years. But what we do initially, when we apply for the permit is we use an EPA approved dispersion model to show that our projected emissions won't negatively impact the surrounding environment. And in this case, we are, we've actually done the dispersion modeling analysis, but it's not been finalized by New Jersey D E P yet. And that shows that we don't have any impacts above what's called significant impact levels. And that's actually an EPA terminology for sources such as, you know, major sources such as Bayonne Energy Center. And the significant impact levels, if you're below them, they're very low. Both EPA and New Jersey D E P determine that you're very unlikely to have significant impacts on the surrounding environment. Now, if you do have impacts above the significant impact levels, you're required to model not only your source, but every other, all the other sources within a given radius, usually about 50 kilometers of your source. Our impacts are low enough, that's not required. One thing I will caveat is EPA, New Jersey D E P don't solely count on modeling for compliance. They have ambient air quality monitors for all the criteria pollutant situated throughout New Jersey to measure, actually measure what's in the air. And also, Bayonne Energy will demonstrate that they're either below or within their allowable emissions by doing that modeling and then stat testing. So it's a multi-layered approach to compliance. And all the sources in New Jersey with permits have those requirements.
Sounds a little bit, uh, project impacts and just the reiteration that, you know, the facility emission limits will still maintain the state of the art and backed and obviously layer two is as well. Again, no increase in annual potential to emit from the facility. Now we'll, you know, open it up to verbal, public comments, questions. We may not be able to answer all the questions right now, but we'll definitely, you know, take them down and respond to them. As I stated earlier on the slides, you know, we have a number of stakeholders. It's a pretty small meeting right here, but so I think we can keep it pretty open. And just remember to be courteous, it is recorded. And again, per my request, just so we don't miss anything, if you could also provide written comments in there, email them to me or, you know, mail them to the facility there, just so we don't miss any of the comments or any of the specific nuances you have within the question. Again, it ends on March 24th. However, again, there'll be another public comment period as other mentioned with the continued permitting process. You don't necessarily have to raise your hand because we do have a small audience here. I'll just let you go ahead. Is there any other questions or public comments that anybody would like to make?
Matt, this is Kevin Bernard. I don't know if you saw, there was a question in the chat, just to define the acronyms.
I'm not having soda.
Would you like me to define then, Matt? I missed that too in the chat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, soda is what, it's a New Jersey D E P term strictly. It's called state of the art technologies. And what that means is if you have any pollutant greater than five tons per year, you have to show that your control technology is state of the art. And it's not unlike the next acronym, B A T, which is best available control technology. And that's an EPA requirement. And typically sources that meet B A T also meet SO. And it requires you to do an analysis demonstrating that your emission limits typically on a pound per million B P or a pound per megawatt basis meet state of the art, top of the line controls. Layer is lowest achievable emission rate, and that's a little bit different. That's even more stringent. Soda and B A T allow you to look at the cost per ton of pollutant removed. And it's, if it's very, very high and it will put the business out of business, you, you can make an argument and you use an EPA methodology to make that demonstration. But lowest achievable emission rate is for, if you're in a non-attainment area, and that does not allow you to account for costs. If you have to do layer, whether or not it's cost effective. So it's, it's the most stringent control technology that there is. And sometimes it's a specific technology and sometimes it's an actual emission. Like a parts per million or a pound per million B P. Yes, we do. We are required to meet all those requirements. We met them in 2008 when we did the initial permitting. And we had to again make that demonstration. Oh, you all done?
Any other questions or anything from the? If there's no other questions, I'll stay on the line. But I know per policy, I believe, have to keep this open until 8:00 P M. So I'll keep this open and recording to 8:00 P M. But if there's no other questions, I invite you guys, if you want to drop off, feel free. Thank you very much for your time and participation in this process. Hey Lisa, I'll keep the line open, I'll be active on it. And then tomorrow morning, we'll just get together and we'll get the New Jersey D E P team all of the materials that they need for this documentation. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm still muted. Okay, I did write down all of the questions, the attendees and responses. But if anybody has any questions, feel free to email us.
When did you say your Title V permit is up for renewal in a, in a couple of months?
Yeah, great. So we're going to start that application process, getting the materials drafted, March, April timeframe. Expecting permit application submittal in the June or July timeframe because that's that 15 months before expiration. Let me get you the exact date. So the permit expires September 24th, 2024. So working back 15 months from there, we'll have that application then. And obviously do this process, you know, according to the regulation when that's promulgated in that April, May timeframe.
So you said 15 months before April 2024?
September 2024.
And so that's April of this year? Sorry, I'm not doing the math right now.
Now, nine and six, so it's June, they're recommended to get the permit application within 15 months prior to the expiration. So that's June, June of this year. The regulatory limit is 12 months. So we have to get the application in prior to September 24th, 2023.
Got you. Okay.
Mr. Sloan, is it representative from the city, any questions or comments from you? Or is?
Yeah, so I am just with the consultant team. I'm actually not involved with the project. They needed someone to come and take notes because they couldn't get coverage of someone involved in the project. So I'm just here to record and then send it up to Andy and team.
Right. I think it's pretty much over. I'm going to keep this open. All that we have left on the line are New Jersey D E P representatives and facility representatives.
Okay, I'll just keep my computer on and, you know, I'll keep the volume up if I think it was back on.
Sounds good.
I'll be here. Thanks.
Yep.
Hey, good afternoon for the recording. It's 8:00 PM now. I'm gonna sign off. Melissa and Matt, thanks for staying on for so long. And we'll get all these documents to the E P in the next couple days. Have a good day. Bye-bye.
Good night.